Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening a regular meeting of the High Point City Council. Here with me on the dais, we've got every member of council present, save our mayor pro 10 Britt Moore. This time, we're going to ask you all to join us for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. First order of business is to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion to do that? So move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Holmes, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Knee against. The ayes have it, and we have our agenda. First recognition that we'd like to do this evening is for Youth Hope Month, and I'm going to ask if, okay, I see my friend Sarah. Is it Rothlinger? Sarah, will you come on up? Will you all celebrate Sarah as she comes up, please? Sarah's the executive director at Youth Focus, and they do incredible work here, not just in our city, but really around the region, to support young people. And so, Youth Hope Month is what we recognize to say here. We're going to step over to the middle here. Whereas every young person deserves safety, stability, and opportunity to thrive. And whereas each year, thousands of young people across the United States experience homelessness, run away from unsafe situations, or face risks of exploitation or harm. And whereas Youth Hope Month raises awareness of the challenges faced by homeless runaway and at-risk youth, and promotes the support and safe resources available to them. And whereas the city of High Point affirms its commitment to youth safety through participation in the National Safe Place Network, offering immediate help and secure locations for youth in need. And whereas local partners such as Youth Focus provide critical shelter, crisis intervention, and long-term support to help young people rebuild stability and hope. And whereas the national 1-800-runaway hotline serves as a vital lifeline for youth seeking safety, guidance, and connection. And whereas the color green, which you're sporting today, symbolizes Youth Hope Month, and represents growth, safety, and a brighter future for young people in crisis. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Youth Hope Month, and encourage all residents, organizations, and community partners to join in supporting youth who are homeless, runaways, or at risk by promoting awareness, connecting them to safety, and standing with them as a find hope and a path forward. Can we please celebrate the great work of Youth Focus? Our next proclamation is for National Homelessness Awareness Month. And for this, I'd like to invite up Brian Ross from Open Door Ministries, Antoine Dalton's from Salvation Army, Brad Bowers from Weston Ministries, and our very own Nina Wilson, Director of Housing and Community Development. Also see, are you here as well, Sherina? Are you here with us? Will you come on up, Ms. Neal from Guilford County Government? And anyone else with you, Ms. Neal?
Yeah.
Michelle, will you come up on behalf of the department? Okay. Is there anyone else who we're leaving out? All right. And I'm going to ask you to come on up too, Scott, so we can recognize the work that Tiny Helm's does. Whereas National Homelessness Awareness Month is observed annually in November to raise awareness of the challenges faced by individuals and families living without stable housing, to highlight the ongoing work to prevent and end homelessness, and to encourage community involvement in addressing the needs of our unhoused neighbors. And whereas, a wide range of circumstances, including the lack of affordable housing, loss of employment, medical crises, domestic violence, and other life-changing events can result in housing instability and homelessness impacting individuals and families across all demographics. And whereas, the persistent shortage of affordable housing for extremely low-income residents, coupled with economic barriers and limited access to supportive resources, continues to exacerbate the challenges faced by people experiencing homelessness. And whereas, it is the shared responsibility of the entire community, including government agencies, faith-based community organizations, nonprofits, businesses, and individual citizens, to collaborate in identifying solutions and providing the resources necessary to help unhoused individuals and families obtain and maintain permanent housing. Whereas, every person deserves a security and dignity that comes from having a safe and stable place to live, and it is imperative that we continue to work collectively towards eliminating the root causes of homelessness while promoting compassion, understanding, and equitable opportunities for all residents. Now therefore, I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as National Homelessness Awareness Month, and call upon all residents, organizations, and institutions to recognize the humanity and resilience of those who are unhoused, to support local housing and service providers, and to reaffirm our collective commitment to ensuring that every member of our community has access to safe, stable, and affordable housing. Can we please celebrate these incredible folks doing their work? You want us in two rows? Okay, we're going to do two rows. Antoine is not a front row person as we saw. Here, here you go. And will you slide down just a tad before I hit the video? There you go. Here, I'm going to have you all hold that. All right, for our next proclamation, I'm going to invite the Honorable Councilman Tim Andrew to come forward. Will you all please celebrate him as he comes forward for our next proclamation?
Not doing the green light, will you? Oh, yeah, I'm doing, I'm doing, I thought there were two separate ones, one for green light and one for the Marine Corps one.
Okay. Sandy keeps it straight, y'all.
Yep.
Sandy keeps it straight. My wife taught me never be too proud to ask questions. I want to ask if it's all right with you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other veterans here with us this evening? If so, will you please come forward? And as they come forward, will you all celebrate them as they come forward, please? So we've, we've got a two-parter. I'm going to do the first part, and then Councilman Andrew's going to do the second part.
Thank you.
Whereas the residents of the City of High Point have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas, the City of High Point seeks to honor these individuals who have paid high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. Active military service members transitioning from military service are at a higher risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service. And whereas, the City of High Point appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Cyril Jefferson, Mayor of the City of High Point, North Carolina, do hereby declare today through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2025, a time to salute, and a time to honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, and that in observance of Operation Green Light, the City of High Point encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of your place of business or your residence. Can we please celebrate these incredible veterans? You want to do the picture first, or you want to do?
We'll do the picture. Let's do the picture together.
Who, you want two rows?
Two rows.
Okay. So we're going to ask our front row folks to be front row.
So first, I'd like to thank the mayor for this privilege. On top of being the Ward Five Representative, I'm also Chief Warrant Officer Five, United States Marine Corps retired. I spent twenty-six years on active duty in the Marine Corps. My twin brother, Chief Warrant Officer Three, Anthony Andrews, spent twenty-four years in the Marine Corps. My younger brother, former First Lieutenant Neil Andrew, was wounded in action towards his second Iraq tour in Fallujah. I have a nephew who honestly honoredly served, and another nephew who's serving right now. History is integral to the Marine Corps. In the Marines' hymn, we start out with the halls of Montezuma, which represents the eighteen forty-seven battles of Japultebek in the Mexican-American War, to the shores of Tripoli, which is the nineteen, sorry, eighteen oh five battle in Durna against Barbary Pirates. High Point also shares in Marine Corps history, for we have several Montford Point Marines, African-Americans who volunteered to earn the title of Marine during World War One, excuse me, World War Two, even though they were segregated, they still served honorably in the Pacific Theater. What I'd like to do this evening in honor of the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the Marine Corps, I'd like to read General John A. Lejeune's Marine Corps Birthday Message, which is read by every Marine Command throughout the world in honor of the Marine Corps Birthday. I didn't need these when I enlisted. "On November 1st, nineteen twenty-one, John A. Lejeune, Thirteenth Commandant of the Marine Corps, directed that a reminder of the honorable service of the Corps be published by every command to all Marines throughout the globe on the birthday of the Corps. Since that day, Marines have continued to distinguish themselves on many battlefields and foreign shores in war and peace. On this birthday of the Corps, therefore, in compliance with the will of the Thirteenth Commandant, Article Thirty-eight, United States Marine Corps Manual, Edition nineteen twenty-one, is republished as follows. On ten November seventeen seventy-five, a Corps of Marines was created by resolution of the Continental Congress. Since that date, many thousands of men and women have borne the name Marine. In memory of them, it is fitting that we who are Marines should commemorate the birthday of our Corps by calling into mind the glories of its long and illustrious history. The record of our Corps is one which will bear comparison with that of the most famous military organizations in the world's history. During ninety of the one-hundred-and-forty-six years of its existence, the Marine Corps has been in action against the nation's foes. From the Battle of Trenton to the Oregon, Marines have won foremost honors in war, and in the long eras of tranquility at home, generation after generation of Marines have grown gray in war in both hemispheres and in every corner of the seven seas that our country and its citizens might enjoy peace and security. In every battle and skirmish since the birth of our Corps, Marines have acquitted themselves with the greatest distinction, winning new honors on each occasion until the term Marine has come to signify all that is highest in military efficiency and soldierly virtue. This name of distinction and soldierly repute, we who are Marines today have received from those who preceded us in the Corps. With it, we also receive from them the eternal spirit which has animated our Corps from generation to generation, and has been the distinguishing mark of Marines in every age. So long as that spirit continues to flourish, Marines will be found equal to every emergency in the future as long as they have been in the past, and the men of our nation will regard us as worthy successors to the long line of illustrious men who have served as soldiers of the sea since the founding of our Corps. The inspiring message of our Thirteenth Commandant has left its mark in the hearts and minds of all Marines. By deed and act, from Guadalcanal to Iwo Jima, from Incheon to the Korean Armistice, in interventions from Lebanon to the Dominican Republic, and from the opening battles in Vietnam to the May Quest rescue, Marines have continued to epitomize those qualities which are their legacy. The success which they have achieved in combat and the faith they have borne in peace will continue. The Commandant and many our friends have added their hearty praise and congratulations on this, our two-hundred-fiftieth birthday. Happy birthday, Marines Semper Fi." We have a picture of the Marines. I'd like a picture of the Marines, Vic.
A Vic, Victor Vic.
Picture of Marines. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Very happy birthday to the Marine Corps, and again, appreciation for all folks who have served. There are a number of Veterans Day events coming up, and hopefully you'll be able to make time to go to them, whether they are a parade or another celebration, all of them very fantastic events to enjoy. Our next order of business is to transition into our public comment period. During this time, we invite folks to speak and address council. You have three minutes to address council. We ask that when you come up, you just share your name and address for the record and let us know what you're speaking on. You have three minutes to go ahead and share. I'll read from our list, but even if you didn't sign up to speak, you still have an opportunity to speak. First, we've got Rick Smith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you all for allowing us to have these times to where we can talk directly to you, and I would like your complete attention tonight. I've lived at twenty-four oh eight Midview Drive in High Point for about thirty years. I grew up in High Point, and I've owned property for fifty-two of those seventy years that I've been here. At this time, I own four properties and pay about ten thousand dollars in property taxes. For my taxes, I feel like I get quite a few city services, and one of the most important one of those city services have been taken away, and that was the use of the Ingleside Recycling Center. That center allowed us citizens to save the city of Holden, oh, Holden Beach, excuse me, the town of High Point, the ability to us to take trash or yard waste there instead of the city having to come and pick it up in front of our homes. So I thought it was something we were doing for you guys, and that was the reason that there was no charges to us that did it. As a point of reference, I have three properties in Brunswick County, in Holden Beach, in Lockwood-Folly area, and I pay about as much taxes there also. But for that, the Brunswick County landfill allows us to put our yard waste in there at no charge, and also dispose of our metal. Also, four times a year, they give us what's called Free Dump Week, and we can take anything out of off our properties and take it to the dump for no charge. This helps us keep the Brunswick County and our communities clean. But as of July this year, our Ingleside Waste Recycling Center started charging to dump waste at a fee of about forty-one dollars a ton. And it doesn't take long if you live in a wooded area out close to Ocala Lake, where Mr. Moore is. In fact, Mr. Moore's the one that told me to get up here and do this if I wanted to make some changes, so I'm asking y'all to think about this seriously. It doesn't take long to rack up quite a bit of money if you've got a full tree at forty-one dollars a ton. I was told that the reason for the change was unauthorized people dumping at that facility. Well, to me, it sounds like a poor management problem. Somebody needs to manage that properly instead of taking it out on us citizens and making us pay a fee. And also, why should we as citizens pay the same fee as somebody that doesn't live in the city of High Point? So it's just one of those things that, you know, if you pile it up by the curb, which I've got a creek that runs in Ocala Lake right beside my house, that I can't put stuff out there. And a fifty-pound weight minimum, I'd have to cut an eighteen-inch tree about six inches wide for it to be fifty pounds to meet their qualifications. This issue needs to be addressed immediately. Give taxpayers a special permit or a card or something. Give us at least a reduced rate for the non-taxpaying, non-residents of High Point that puts stuff in this Ingleside Recycling Center. And again, I think we're trying to save the city of High Point money. We're doing, I think, a service to help you guys spend less money keeping trash and tree limbs off the side of the road. Again, thank you for your attention. I'm usually on that side of defense. I'm a commissioner at Holden Beach, so I do appreciate y'all's attention tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next on our list, Chad Baxter.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Chad Baxter, and I report from eight sixteen East Green Drive. I'm here to bring to your attention that on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, an email was sent out informing us that we would be losing sixteen percent of our on-call hourly wages because of a rate change. I'm here tonight representing at least a hundred and forty-eight on-call employees. That number equals ten percent of our city's workforce. These one hundred and forty-eight represent the boots on the ground, if you will. They're the ones that actually do the work. Just a few years ago, we were called the essential workers when everyone else worked from home. Now, the tables have turned over. Our overtime wage has been cut by sixteen percent. We were given a handout twenty-eight days later with cloudy information and answers that could be labeled murky at best. I asked myself, are these the values that our city stands for? We can't find a solution to the problem, so we'll just cut their wages. Generally speaking, it's easy for someone to make and support changes that do not affect them in any way. I asked all of you here tonight, how would you feel if your wages were lightened by sixteen percent? High Point's on website states that we are governed by council slash mayor form of government. It says that city council is the governing body of the city, and you, council, provide exercising all municipal powers. Therefore, we are asking you to use those stated powers to help reinstate our overtime wages. Mr. Mayor, in your own campaign website, you state it isn't political, it's personal, and that people want leadership that solve problems and not play games. You also mentioned that your focus in public service is paychecks, education, neighborhoods, and businesses. I hope you too will support the decision to reinstate our overtime wages. In this situation, I'm reminded of a few Bible verses, Jeremiah twenty-two, eight, nine, and thirteen. "And many nations shall pass this city, and they shall say every man to his neighbors, Wherefore hath the Lord done unto this great city? Then they shall answer, Because they have forsaken the covenant of the Lord their God, and worshiped other gods, and served them. Woe unto him that buildeth his house by unrighteousness, and his chambers by wrong, that uses his neighbor's servants without wages, and give him naught for his work." In conclusion, I have worked for the city for over twenty-six years, and this is the first time I've suffered a wage cut. If we allow this to stand, what's next? I pray you do some soul searching and ask yourself, is this right? I hope you will consider my request valid and worthy of your efforts. I would like to thank everyone who came out to support me and our cause.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Scott Jones.
Good evening, city council members, residents, and citizens of High Point, North Carolina. Tiny House Community Development came about High Point probably about five years ago when we were gifted land on Hay Street, which we built ten tiny houses that serve supportive housing to people and veterans experiencing homelessness. As a veteran of the United States Army, a son-in-law who is a United States Staff Sergeant, uh, Staff Sergeant in Marine Corps, and many, many cousins, a father who also served in the military, I found it my duty to create a community I found it my duty to create a community specifically addressing veterans who are sick, who are experiencing homelessness and poverty. We were gifted land on Smith Street about five years ago as well, and we started construction about two years ago or less on a veterans' community that would consist of a Veterans' Community Resource Office that would serve veterans across this county, four one-bedroom tiny houses, two two-bedroom veteran family houses as they transition out of homelessness or homeless prevention, and then our final phase was going to be two three-bedroom respite care homes for veterans who can't no longer stay by themselves because of surgeries or illnesses for a temporary period of time. Unfortunately, due to the site, we ran over our budget. No fault of our own, or the contractors, or the many, many volunteers who have dedicated their time to build this community on Smith Street. We have asked the city for $168,000 to complete this community. That's only 168,000. I know that's not a lot to some, and it's a great deal to others. But tonight, we celebrated a proclamation or observed a proclamation for veterans, Marines, and the homeless. But we were denied the additional funding to finish the current phase of this project on Smith Street. And I'm asking the city, I'm pleading, our nonprofits pleading with the city of High Point for the 168,000 to finish the current project, and an additional 300,000, which may be met by Guilford County, who we already have had their representatives out there, to build the two respite care homes that will serve veterans for decades to come. This is one of many communities that we have planned in the High Point Guilford County area. I just, I beg the City Council to please reconsider your decision of not funding the additional shortage that we have experienced, and let's get this community done. Today, a mother and a boy scout actually put flagpoles that they donated in the ground, put them up representing the United States American Flag, the POW Flag, and each branch of service is now overlit on Smith Street. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Louis Thibodeau.
My name is Louis Thibodeau. I reside at 1242 Kensington Drive, High Point. I'm almost a loss for words. I've come here tonight, I don't have anything memorized, I don't have a speech before me. But I want to say, our pastor preached a sermon Sunday where there was two dates and a dash, walking through a cemetery when they were kids. And his thought was, what is your dash going to be when you're no longer here? We're all going to leave one day unless Jesus comes and we're still here. But I ask you to please, from what I've heard thus far tonight, there's a lot that we can think about to help others. But I want to pray for y'all, each one of you. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day, and dear God, I thank you for your Son Jesus. Dear God, help them and guide them in all the decisions they need to make, dear God, that it's not their decision, but they rely on your wisdom. And dear God, as I pray for each one, even if they don't know who you are, dear God, that they will see you and know that you are real. And dear God, I pray for each one that's here tonight. Dear God, thank you for your Son Jesus. In his name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, we have Margaret Flippin.
And Victor Dover.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Thank you for having us this evening and allowing us public comment. My name is Margaret Flippin, 1571 Sunset Drive, Coral Gables, Florida, and we're here working with the Southwest Renewal Foundation and the citizens of High Point to plan South Main Street, to look at South Main Street from Grimes to Business I-85, and to look for opportunities for both public and private improvements of the street. And why are we doing that and why is that important? Well, when you look at the neighborhoods, the Southside Neighborhood as well as Macedonia, ways and opportunities to reconnect and restitch these neighborhoods. Right now, South Main Street is acting like a fairly wide thoroughfare as you're cruising from Business I-85 into downtown. So looking for opportunities to improve connections, improve mobility, and the way we want to do that as well is by gathering community input and feedback. And so I come here tonight to invite you all and to invite the citizens of High Point to participate in this engaging, interactive planning process. So all of this week, we've set up a temporary planning and design studio at 600 South Main Street, which is the Home Elegant showroom, and we like to do that because we like to work right here in your city creating the plan. And the idea with that as well is to get as many hands and ideas and feedback on that plan, because this is a plan for a very important part of your city. It's the gateway, it's the entrance, and so many people live, work, drive, and visit along this street every day. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday at 5:30, we're going to have a community dinner, and everyone is welcome, everyone is invited, also at 600 South Main Street. And that's going to be an opportunity to truly come together, work along tables, have a meal together, and share your ideas for the future of this very important area. And then the remainder of the week, you're welcome to stop by the studio anytime from nine to five, and then on Friday morning at 8:30, we're having what we're calling Coffee on the Corridor. So on your way to work, or on your way to school, or just come by and see us, have a cup of coffee, and we'll show you sort of what we've been able to create this work this week through the community input as well as our draft designs and planning ideas. So we just wanted to come here tonight to sort of help to spread the word about this important planning process and hope that everyone will come out and attend. So thank you very much.
Mayor, Council members, I'm Victor Dover, town planner and urban designer and Margaret's sidekick. I just want to tell you how excited we are to be working on this. The words "main street," they mean a lot to Americans, these words. Those streets that get that name are the ones that are the most important ones in their region or their city. They tell the story of their city. There are ways to go from here to there, and there are places of commerce, but they're also the places where indelible impressions are formed of the city as a whole, and that's what makes us feel like this week is so important. South Main Street should be safe for all users, it should be beautiful, and it should be a magnet for reinvestment. And in all three areas, there's room for improvement. The design of that, like the physical vision for that, is of critical importance, and so we're going to be working with technical experts and citizens alike to try and pull together onto paper a vision for what this segment of South Main Street could be. I couldn't be more excited about it, and just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work on it. Any questions for us?
No. We appreciate it, and we encourage residents to come on out and speak with you all about Plan South Main. So thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else who didn't sign up during public comment who'd like to come up and speak? Okay, if you'll come forth, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address council.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Chad McStaugner, 801 Miller Street and 301 West English Road. I come to you tonight with three Ps. I love alliteration, so I'm going to come at you with praise. I want to give some praise, I want to paint a picture, and I want to make a plea. First praise is the opening public comment. I come from a city, I raised my family in a city that doesn't allow public comments, doesn't have space for it, and it breeds frustration, it breeds distrust if there's not a clear path to address the council. So thank you for having this. I know a lot of people appreciate it, I appreciate it, and I think it, even though you have to listen to me or others come before you again and again, I think it probably keeps, you know, keeps problems at bay because of the communication, open lines, and how you handle it. Y'all are respectful and inquisitive. So that's my first praise. Second praise during market, my manager noticed that there was a broken water meter cover, and it was by the sidewalk. She was worried someone's going to step in it and hurt themselves, and she called the city, and in less than thirty minutes, there was someone there and swapped it. So, I mean, that doesn't happen by accident, so congratulations to the city managers and assistant city managers and you, Mayor, for just a tight run. So similarly, in town, I've stayed past market to work on this building that I'm trying to improve for an order, and I've had three inspections and book them, they're there the next day, professional, on time. So again, that doesn't happen by accident, I appreciate that. And, yeah, so those are my three praises. A picture, I was at a dinner a while, a month ago with Amanda Cook, and I told her this story, and I thought I'd share it, especially since some of the other stories tonight. So at my intersection, there's always broken glass and trash and the sidewalk, I mean, the amount of heroin needles is crazy, and I was cleaning it up because I have a neighbor that calls me, lets me know when people dump trash, whatever needs an attention. I was sweeping up the heroin needles, and I saw something out of the corner of my eye, I turned around, and there were some vines growing up out of the cracks, and they were flowering, and there were hummingbirds. And I just thought that was a beautiful picture of my vision for that area that, on the property, is to plant a garden and have a showroom, and also have a warehouse, and then a place to train artisans. So I just thought that was, it resonated when I told you that, and I just thought I'd paint that picture that, you know, that...[1328.24][1328.24](phone ringing) I'm already done. Wow, okay, well...
Very quickly, what's your plea? Very quickly, what's your plea?
Oh, just, I'm here, I'm engaged, I'm working on this, on this project, and I just, just don't want you to tear down my building.
Okay, got it, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak during public comment, who didn't get a chance to sign up? All right. Well, thank you all to everyone who did come and speak to us during public comment period, and at this time, we'll go ahead and close it. Next item for discussion would be approving our consent agenda. You all take some time to review that, and then when ready, we'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilmember Holmes, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to approve consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025-454, amended ordinance establishing dates and times for official sessions of the High Point City Council. You all have that scheduled in front of you all. Any discussion on this? None, we'll entertain a motion.
Stand up.
Second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Peters to approve, and seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next item is item 2025-455, consideration of an appointment to Library Board of Trustees for Mr. Charles Pauling. Mr. Charles Pauling would serve on this board effective immediately and expiring October 31st, 2028. Is there a motion here?
Second.
Councilmember Holmes makes a motion to approve. Councilmember Johnson makes a second on that motion. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I may make a statement?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pauling will be my appointment, and I do not see him... Oh, he's out there. Good, good, good. All right. And Mr. Pauling, he's actually contacted me, and very, he's very willing and just is super excited about working and doing things in High Point, and so my hat is off to you. Thank you for wanting to serve on this particular board. Thank you again.
Mr. Pauling, thank you for your service and willingness to serve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. At this time, we'll entertain any announcements or comments from the dais?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remind the public of the High Point Veterans Day Parade on Sunday, November 9th at 3:00 PM down on, along Main Street.
Okay. Veterans Day Parade, Sunday, November 9th at 3:00 PM on Main Street.
Correct.
Mr. Dover just talked about Main Street. Okay. Am I correct that we have a birthday today?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. Okay.
And Councilmember Holmes, last Friday.
Oh, last Friday, that's right. We had two birthdays. Okay.
It is.
No worries, we're not going to sing, y'all.[1539.15][1539.15](laughter) Happy birthday to you both. Any other announcements from the dais?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. So the SNAP benefits were delayed, and I just read right before the council meeting, they're going to pay half the amount of SNAP benefits for November. Hopefully, they'll figure the rest out up in Washington. The Grand High Point Food Alliance and Simple Jesters started the Fill the Gap Campaign and encouraged people to donate to food pantries. So if you go to the Food Alliance website or a Simple Jester website, you can find out more about getting involved and helping your neighbor who's food insecure.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if you have time, please lift up Jamaica. They were experiencing generational storm, and there's damage, there's loss of life, and resources are going to be needed as well, so please continue to pray.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just, there are a couple of events happening this week around our trol that will be unveiled later, but there's an art talk on Wednesday, and I have two extra tickets to that, so if anybody wants to come, I would love to give you a ticket. And the ribbon cutting is at noon on Friday. And then an upcoming thing for High Point is there's a Banana Ball-style baseball team that is forming, and so there is an event this Saturday at the Dive Bar. If you want to learn more about that team and their upcoming season and where they are in the process, I think that's a really good opportunity for High Point to have something very relevant and cool, so. And I'm just looking at Jaron Hollis over there. When I first got onto council, that was one of the first conversations we had, was that I would love to see Banana Ball come to High Point one day, so dreams really do come true.[1655.71][1655.71](laughter)
Any other announcements? I want to just recognize a few things. This week, there's several events taking place in addition to the Veterans Day celebrations, the ribbon cutting of the new trol that will open up on Southside High Point. We also have YWCA of High Point celebrating 105 years, and just signed a proclamation to celebrate that. They've got their big Heart of Community Luncheon this Wednesday where they'll recognize that. We've got the NCCJ Citation Award Dinner this Thursday, where our very own Jackie Davis from DIET will be recognized with an award there, so we're very excited to celebrate her. I think, Mr. Thay, I celebrated you the last meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, I celebrated you the last meeting.
You'll take another one?[1708.01][1708.01](laughter) Ah, that's funny, very funny. We mentioned the trol and the Veterans Day Breakfast at HPU on Friday, and then Macedonia has got their big fundraiser on Saturday to support all the work that they do in our community as well. So very excited about all the things happening here. There was something I was going to say, and I think I completely forgot it. Allow me to finish by saying this. Everyone who comes to speak during public comment period, I hope you recognize that council goes a great deal to take notes on what you shared for us to go back and look at a lot of these things to figure out what's what. So appreciate the comments about Ingleside, about on-call employees and the impact there to wages, the tiny homes, Mr. Jones, Plan South Main, and thank you as always for prayer, Mr. Thibodeau. So appreciate folks showing up and being a part of tonight's meeting. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stand up.
Second. Motion is recognized to Councilmember Peters, seconded to Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank y'all.[1780.86][1780.86](gunshot)